This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
There you go. It is. Yeah, it's red.
Okay, uh this meeting is called the order. Welcome to everyone in attendance. Uh this is the uh East Hampton City Council Public Safety Meeting. Uh today is May third, twenty twenty two. It is six oh one P M. Uh in attendance, I see our our two committee members. We also have a couple, another uh city council member here and uh Director of Public Works, Greg Nellman. Um just a couple ground rules. Uh just raise your hand to be recognized to speak. Um I'll allow uh public input as comments. I'd like to try to avoid kind of back and forth with the public. We'll allow them to make statements when their period of statements is done. Councillors can decide if they'd like to respond to anything. Uh and um obviously other welcome guests here. Just raise your hand to speak. Uh councillors could of course ask the follow-up questions. So if you ask a question, for instance, of Director Nellman, any answers, feel free to just ask a follow-up question, but try not to maintain order. Um we have a couple minutes. I saw that um councillor Riley, our um fantastic clerk, sent us minutes from March twenty fourth. And I sent out minutes earlier as well from um what was that? Let me think of this. Did you two get the ones that I sent out?
Yep. So uh March twenty fourth to April twenty seven.
Oh, March twenty fourth. April twenty seven. Thank you. Um did uh councillor, did you get a chance to see there those?
Yep.
I did. I saw both.
And uh I mean, did you see, I obviously saw the ones you submitted, councillor Riley. Did you see the ones I sent out?
Yes, um I wasn't at the meeting though, um but everything looks fine to me.
Right. Okay, so um I think what we would do then in that case is um councillor Riley having been absent from one of those, um I'll take separate motions. So um I'll take a motion first to um approve the minutes from March twenty fourth.
So moved.
And I'll second that since I was the only person there. Uh all in favor? I.
Aye.
Okay, we don't have to do roll call then. Great. Um and separately, I'll take a motion for the minutes submitted by councillor Riley and him. Sorry to remind you of that date.
Twenty seventh.
Twenty seventh of April. I'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Uh do we have a second?
Yep.
We have a motion and a second. Um the only question I'd say on those, I believe that Hampshire Hope is the funding source there, but it might be via the dark progress. So I don't think that's, we can always clarify those later. So it's not that huge. So we have a motion and a second. Any other comment? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? Any abstentions? No. Okay, we got it. Um is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak tonight? Or any other members present?
Is that?
We we're not hybrid.
Oh, we're not hybrid.
No, we're we're figuring that out.
Alright.
Um we have another councillor here. Uh councillor, do you have any comments?
No.
Um or director Nellman, do you have any comments as a member of the public? Okay, no. So no uh public speak time. Uh so moving on to our next item on the agenda, Department of Public Works report. As uh you're probably aware, we're doing quarterly uh reports from public safety, which we consider D P W part of public safety. Um um and we appreciate all you do. As I was saying earlier, you're responsible. So um uh are there any opening comments from the councillors of the committee before I turn over to uh director Nellman? Okay, director Nellman, you go to the floor.
Okay, so I I hope I covered what what the committee was hoping uh that I would in this presentation. Uh I think this will be great for not only for the committee, but the public, just to break down the D P W uh what in the city we're responsible for and and kind of some of the things we're working on um right now. So just jump into it here. Um so put an organizational chart together uh just to talk about how we're broken down, uh where we, the Board of Public Works is responsible for everything the department handles. Myself as director, I'm responsible for uh building operations, which is the Public Safety Complex, Council on Aging and the Municipal Office Building. The D P W is further broken down into kind of five divisions, uh Highway, Utilities, Engineering, Administration and Waste Water Treatment. Uh the Highway Division consists of uh one supervisor, a foreman and five full-time staff members. Kind of under the Highway Department, we have the Modern Repair Division, which is uh one foreman and a lead mechanic and a mechanic. Two full-time staff there, and they're responsible for maintenance of about a hundred, our fleet's about a hundred vehicles and pieces of equipment. That's citywide, including School Department, Parks Department, Public Works, Police and Fire. The uh Utility Division takes care of the water and sewer utilities for the town, city for drainage, they run the water treatment plant on Hendrick Street, the sanitary sewer collection system and all the stormwater infrastructure for the city. That consists of supervisor, our water quality manager, who handles all of our bacteria sampling, the cross connection control program. A lot of the regulatory compliance that we need to do for uh the state for the public water system. And um that division has two foremen, one Sewer Department Sewer Division and one in the Water Department. And then between water and sewer, there's eight full-time staff members. The Engineering Division consists of our our city engineer, Dan Murphy, and our staff engineer, Diane Rossini, to absolutely. Every every person I talk about here is an asset for the city. I mean, uh yeah, and Diane really do a good job of keeping our programs, our projects. And then the administration, which is myself, our full-time, two full-time staff in the office, Shelley, Bokey, and uh R E L, our constable there. And then kind of under the administration vision, I call the administration vision, is the uh Tree Ward and and uh management of the city's streetlights. And then uh the Waste Water Treatment Plant, of course, we have one foreman down there, Industrial Pretreatment Program, or N A K, who handles the compliance with retrap inspections and things with restaurants and some of the regulatory compliance stuff with plan and uh five full-time staff. They also maintain people, eighteen pump stations located throughout the city that convey uh sanitary sewer falls in different neighborhoods too. So that's pretty much the whole D P W. So as I said, building operations consists of the uh management and maintenance of the City Hall, Public Safety Complex, Council on Aging. Some of the priorities there, we're gonna be looking at a uh roof replacement on the safety complex in the next few years. We do need to do some replacement of the curving there, this concrete curb that's really deteriorating around the parking lot. Some of the H VAC improvements we'll be covering with the the Honeywell Energy Efficiency Project, Phase One of that, which is starting to get underway. Looking forward to that, some improvements, get those improvements in place for the guys in that building. So here at Fifty Payson, we're starting with a lot, a lot will be happening in this building with the uh with Phase One of the Honeywell project. We're also beginning to work on a project that will just kind of do a kind of a light remodel of the inside of the building. A lot of the offices have changed. We need to give new signage, wayfinding signs for around the building. Like to get some landscaping work done outside and uh just kind of freshen up the space, replace some carpets. I think this, the renovation, last renovation here was back, I think in two thousand three. So everything's about twenty years old. It's it's time to just just do a little bit here and there. You know, the C O A, I think there'll be some larger community conversations soon around that building and and how how uh city wants to move forward with it. There's some significant investments to be made there. Couple things, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna do some of the kind of loading and fruits and the smaller stuff that that can be done in our own M budget, or replacements and little things, but there's some uh some bigger conversations that I think the community needs to get, needs to get started on. So I've been working a little with uh the city, the director over there about, you know, I was just gonna center forward. Some of it is, some of how that building moves forward is centered around the building itself. There's quite a bit of work to be done. Uh Highway Department, two of the capital priorities that we're, we'll be working on soon. We need to, we do need to badly replace the street sweeper. I have a picture of it down there in the corner, guys. Uh it's two thousand six. Generally get just five, six, eight years of service out of a street sweeper. So we're living that.
We really have one.
We have one. Yep. And uh Dennis said need over more repair to do a do a heck of a job, keeping that thing operating, but it is out of service quite often. So that capital expense on that is about two two hundred seventy-five thousand per month sweeper. We are in the process of replacing Truck sixty-one, put an appropriation through last month, we're looking at replacement of that vehicle. So I'll get into the Glendale Bridge a little bit more in the next uh next couple slides. But the, you know, there's a lot of sid- a lot of sidewalk work around town, around the city we'll be working on. I'll get into some South Street and some of the other things we're making way at, and we're gonna go where we can. There's a significant investment in the city. We do have a couple of, get into about Loyoke Street and some of the pedestrian safety improvements that we're we're working towards making there. So.
We'll just go to your.
Yeah, go ahead.
Would it be easier for you if people asked questions as you go along, or you want my questions to go ahead?
Depending what it pertains to. I mean, I can, as I get through other slides, I'm sure you're gonna have questions about some of the projects. But um if there's anything specific to the Highway Department equipment, you wanna?
Anyone have questions so far?
The only, the I guess the only question I have is on the street sweeper. I feel like
Yep.
it wasn't that long ago that we did something with the sweep, street sweeper. I can't remember exactly what it was, but it's in my recent memory.
Okay.
Um and 'cause I know there was talk about renting versus buying a new one versus, you were you around for that?
We were.
I'm just um, you know, I know that we use a street sweeper in the spring generally.
Yep.
The the point of it is to get the the salt and sand or whatever residuals on the roads off, right? Um and so I guess, you know, I I think it would be interesting to see what kind of creative solutions we could come up with around. Do we buy a new street sweeper? Is it worth it? Do we look at, you know, hiring somebody once a year to come in to do it? Like, but I'm I'm sure that's under radar. I just, I just remembered, I couldn't remember if we bought a used one, and that's why it's a two thousand six?
Nope, nope, nope.
So that's the one we've had for.
That's the one we've had, yes.
Alright, so.
So and some of the street sweeping is is necessary for compliance with our municipal storm severance, our M S four permit.
Right. Correct.
So we're required to do certain amount of paint, amount of area to keep keeping some of that catch basins going on the highways.
Councillor Riley, any support?
Yep. Big projects, this is a big Highway Department project right now. Uh we're in the middle of uh middle of overlaying Prospect Hill Avenue. And uh Cyril Avenue, a whole bunch of drainage work, replacement of several water surfaces, replacement of a couple of fire hydrants. We built it up. Hopefully get that paved in the next few weeks. The uh you know, the underground work is starting to wind down, so.
He wants to thank you. Some of them is in my district. They've been asking for years.
Yep.
But we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it. So thanks.
So that repair, I have a picture up there in the bottom right, is is a huge drainage repair that the uh water and sewer guys that kind of pulled together did a great job on. Last week, there was actually five catch basins installed in that corner of the street because it all pitches that way. I think years ago, that road might have gone all the way through before National Nobles expanded or before the drain. I'm not sure, but.
And then they built a house after.
Yes.
Is that the corner of High Street?
That's High Street, possibly, yeah. So that kind of came up with a very creative solution there, put those two uh large grades, uh two large drainage structures in. You know, once we get it, it'll look great, but it's all paved. Hopefully it'll all it'll all work the way we're planning, so.
Right behind that is the bike path and the
Yep.
and the pond.
Yes. So we there, we did a bunch of sidewalk point repairs to take in, do a little horse panels. We're kind of working with, doing what we can, what we have over there. And would like to have done more sidewalk, but financially it's just not, it's not really, you know, in the cars. So it'll be good passing the sidewalk along every street, so. It's about, so onto the Glendale Bridge. This is a lar- a large expense that the city's gonna be looking at, you know, gonna be facing in the next few years. If you have a, too much like to it, I, you know, it does get inspected by the state annually. Last year, or June twenty-one, we had the uh splice plate, from the top left there, you can see the old splice plate on the bridge. And uh we worked with uh Freeman Peterson, G P I engineering firm, and uh C O Y A, Bridge Repair Contractor, to get those splice plates replaced and kind of buy some time to the bridge. But you can see by the pictures just what we're dealing with, with the concrete deterioration, the railing deteriorating. In the bottom left there, you can see some great um steel kind of encasements for the pro railings that are, those were actually fabricated by our guys over at Modern Repair Dennis made years, years and years ago. So the engineering firm is very impressed with how he made those. It was done by someone in-house. But we've had trouble getting that bridge to fit into some of the state funding programs that are out there. It's either too long, too short, too wide, and it's just been a, it's been a challenging thing to find funding for. So, you know, we're we're constantly looking. I think we've got repair and replacement estimates in the area of two and a half million dollars. Just design in the area of two hundred thousand.
Have you spoken to Representative Carey about the visibility here, mark money from the infrastructure bill for this? Is it a follow-up or?
A little. Um and I actually had a conversation with Congressman Neal's office last week, two weeks ago. They didn't really think they could slide this into anything, anything pertinent right now, so. We're on it. We're we're, our eyes are out looking at every state program that comes to to try and find a way to do this. I mean, couple of the recommendations we've gotten from our consultants were to roll our Chapter ninety funding for five, I mean, it would be five, five, six years of Chapter ninety funding.
Yep.
So we know other paving, that's one. Trying to get it out of the state tip process, which is, that would be, we'd be years out on that. We'd probably be looking in twenty, thirty maybe, I suppose. And then the tip process requires a more extensive level of design that would increase, certainly increase the design costs, so.
Is there a mean estimate on how long that bridge would stay viable without like a like a overhaul? I mean, in terms of like it, 'cause I know sometimes, right, when we if you're not a structural engineer, you can look at that and think that it looks horrible.
Yep.
It's probably gonna last a lot longer than most people would assume. You know what that is?
Well, it's currently posted. So the way, the posted by by for weight, so it'll only take a certain amount of weight over some reaction due. If I had to put a year range to that bridge, I'd say, I'd say five to eight years.
Okay.
But the state would inspect it in this fall, and it's due, and that could change.
Okay.
So so I just wanna have that on everybody's screen.
Yes, it is. There's no question.
I was just gonna, so at this point, it's not considered like a uh um a failing bridge or, but I mean, it could, when it gets inspected, it could potentially fall into that category, which I think there's lots of bridges in that, in that category. This, right?
Yeah, this this one's our worst.
This is our worst, yeah.
But yes, there is, there is bridges across the state now.
Good. I imagine when that gets redone, it'll probably be closed for the duration. It won't put a temporary bridge in.
Um I I have looked at a concept they put together where we would have alternating traffic.
Oh, do you have?
From lane of alternating traffic, we could do it that way. I'd like to see it done that way, uh just because
The West Street.
they need to get a neighborhood or a fire truck out to lock the road. Um and we want to do, we want that to be passable, so uh especially with the neutral lane of fire department supplies. So what's the intent?
Right.
It's a way to get there, so. Uh some quick discussion of the Water Department, uh or Water, Water, which are which is from Water Utility guys. Um so like their, you know, basic focus is is implementing the recommendations of the Integrated Water Resource Management Plan, I W R M P, that we talked about a lot. We try to fund what we can and and take away what we can off that plan. But really, you know, their their main focus is just keep the water coming, keep the water in the pipes and uh coming out of where you want it to and not where you don't want it to. So they operate the plant on Hendrick Street. Picture on the bottom left, there's Hendrick Street Well Field. That's all about, you know, I'd say thirty percent of the city's water from that source. There's hundred and twenty, two and a half inch wellheads out there that mount into the aquifer and supply the uh low-head pump station to uh to the to the Hendrick Street Aeration Tower, which is the water there. That's a picture of water main that broke on uh, that's on Ferry Street. Super cold. I think that was back in twenty eighteen. I start to blurt again.
Yeah. Now, do we have um water storage capability? I know that there is a tank on the base of, on the foothills in Mount Tom, and then there's one over off Hendrick Street up. At least those are the two I know of.
So the tank on Mount Tom was taken out of service in two thousand ten.
And and so no water gets stored there?
No.
And is that what it was for? It was just for storage?
It was a water storage tank, yeah. Uh there was trouble with it getting uh bacteria hits.
Right.
And and leaking, and that's where the bacteria hits were coming from. So, you know, uh they took it offline, but we keep six million gallons of water. So we've got two million on Burt Road.
Okay.
And four million on Buncher Lane.
Okay, so yeah, okay, jury is the other one. That's right. Um and and how are those, like, what's the, 'cause it sounds like that one got old and wasn't able, the other one's in pretty good shape, like.
Yeah, they're uh pre-stressed concrete tanks. Um the tank on Burt Road was put in service, I think, in two thousand two, Buncher Lane nineteen eighty-six or eighty-eight. Both are, I've had, I've had them inspected recently, and they're they're both structurally and 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 buried in shape, so.
Hate to kill you with questions here, but.
No, it's fine.
Um as far as, as far as, as far as uh, you know, water storage and water demand, how long, say, there was some sort of uh issue and we weren't able to get water up for some reason, contamination or something, how long would we have?
We have an amazingly robust water system. If I, if we can't supply it, I mean, just the Non-Tuck well, as as we have three main sources, right? The Brook Street well, the Non-Tuck well, the Hendrick Street pump station. Any one of those three sources will supply a hundred percent of the city's water. I mean, we we might put a notice out and ask to conserve, you know, take it easy, but we can, we can do it with either one of the three. The uh the tank up on Burt Road basically sets a hydraulic rating for the city. We could be floating that tank to forty-eight, fifty-two feet to to keep water pressure.
Pressure.
Yeah, without anyone noticing the difference. Interesting.
Um are there, is there any federal grants or any grants or capability that we could tap into to expand our water storage capacity? And and I'm, the reason I'm asking is is might seem crazy, but I think that as we look into the future, it might make sense for the city um having extra water on hand that we might be able to sell.
So we do, we're currently, we're currently permitted from the state to pump us about seven million gallons of water a day. We operate off a Water Management Act registration, as it's called.
Yep.
We do have a permit, a Water Management Act permit for the Brook Street well, which is why we have to put water use restrictions in place. Otherwise, we could just operate, we didn't use that well, or had never, had never developed that well, we could just operate off our Water Management Act registration. So we do sell water to Southampton as needed, and we have the capacity to do that. I wouldn't, if I had a trying to think of how to phrase, if I had an opportunity to build another storage tank, I don't think I would, I would wanna use funding to do that. I'd probably focus on another part of the system, another
Part of the system.
type of resiliency.
Yep.
Um because we start to have trouble with gauge of water and storage, and we have to sample each tank times a month, and we start with bacteria trouble, the tanks aren't turning.
Right.
So it can be, can be challenging to keep the water in storage and keep it.
'Cause I have a feeling in the near future, some of the southwestern states are gonna be looking for communities to partner with
Yep.
to get water. Because, I mean, uh living in Arizona for a while, the Lake Mead is
Yes.
rapidly
Yeah.
turned to bad. It's really rough.
Yeah. Yep.
And so they're gonna probably be looking to, in order to stay viable, they're gonna, and if we can, if we can come up with some of those partnerships,
Yeah. Yeah.
that could be pretty lucrative for the city.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's something just to.
It was great to see like the connection we have with Southampton. It's now it's a hundred percent metered, because we have a hundred percent of Southampton, so.
Really?
They haven't relied on us too too much, but um it's nice to see that they have that there. We can't really rely on them, but you know, you can help out, you know.
Councillor Riley, any water related questions?
Yep.
I'll bet.
Good question.
A little bit more about the uh Utilities Division. That truck up there in the corner, it's a Truck thirty-three. Uh it's nineteen ninety-nine international. It still runs good, but it's just, it's just rusting out. It's getting to, we've got some decisions to make about whether we're gonna keep uh throwing good money at at a bad truck. So it's just, it's at a point where we we really need to look for replacement for years. We're looking at about two hundred thousand dollars per uh new truck.
And that's the main truck for like main brakes and stuff?
So that truck kind of has, takes a backseat role now, but yes, it does haul our equipment out when we have water main brakes. Uh we try not to run that every day. It's got the uh catch basin cleaner mounted on it, and we don't generally clean catch basins with that style of equipment anymore. We have the uh, let's go back in the slide here. We have the back truck now. We use that for for catch basin cleaning and it's not sewer shedding. So it's it's much uh safer cleaner way to do it than using a steco planter or something.
It's only a single cab as it take a backseat.
Oh.
You don't wanna see that. I don't wanna see too serious here. So anyways.
But uh, so we've got the um I just had a run appropriation through for the uh Storage Unit twenty-nine, which is our back to flush and combo truck. That was on the other slide.
That was a garage.
Garage.
Yeah, the garage addition at the Sewer Department. We're looking forward to getting that project. Another one that uh just came through was the Low Head Pump Station, Pines Well Communication Repair. So the Low Head Pump Station, the picture on the bottom left there, that's the pumps that pull water out of the Hendrick Street Well Field and supply it to the plant. Those are uh nineteen ninety-six. It's just time for them to mount and go get a bit of overhaul and go back in, so uh before it turns into something larger. We just had some trouble with the fiber optic communications between the Pines Well, the Low Head Pump Station and the plant. So fairly local to the Water Department Hendrick Street, but needs to be addressed.
Is that what that little building is at um uh down at O'Neil, at Pleasant, that near the bridge there? Is that also a pump? Is that?
That is the Lowtham Street Waste Water Pump Station.
Oh, okay.
Oh, it's wastewater?
Yes.
I didn't realize that.
Yeah. It's it's one of our largest ones. I just, an appropriation actually just went through for that with the uh air lease valve replacement and bypass design. 'Cause we're one of our largest stations in the city.
And then. The one at Non-Tuck is a, is a
So uh.
in the back near the pond in the soccer fields.
We have that.
No, well, there's two actually then, right? There's the big one with the cedar um
Yep, that is the Brook Street Pump Station.
Yep, and then there's a little one like that that's over by the uh in the back.
That, the Non-Tuck well, which is kind of closer to the baseball field.
Yep.
And then right where you come in and out of the park on the right is the Daily Field Pump Station.
Right.
That and the Wellfield Street are two of our largest wastewater pump stations.
Okay.
Daily Field takes a lot of the wastewater flowing in the plains, uh line stream and everything out that way. And then
No, I had a, Mr. Chair, sorry, I have, 'cause I, when we're talking about water, I had a question and I just lost it. Do we test our water for P F O S?
Yes.
And how are we doing with P F O S?
Even non-detect.
Great.
Yeah.
And because that's a, if that got into our water, it'd be a huge expense for filtration, right? Like, that's a massive thing.
Yes. Yeah.
And that's pretty awesome. We don't, 'cause.
Absolutely, yeah. And we've done, we we took advantage of some free testing that the state made available the last couple of years, and I mean, we've we've stayed non-detect. But they say the aquifer kind of flows north and south.
Yeah.
And Barnes, where the, some of the contamination originated, and then Westfield kind of got the the brunt of it, where we've we've avoided it being to the north where the contamination.
It's a lucky, it's really lucky.
Yeah, ex- extremely, extremely.
The term's familiar. What, you, uh, also for the public, what?
People were pearly, pearly.
Per floral alcohol substances.
Okay.
It's it's the, it's the foam that they would use to put out uh jet fuel fires.
Oh, from like Barnes and Lady River Center.
And they also use that as like uh waterproof coatings and stuff. It just doesn't break down.
Yeah, it's a, uh, it's a non-stick on the food wrappers.
That is tough on that, yeah.
So.
Good.
Don't want it in the drinking. That's for sure.
Anything else with councillor Riley, that's their bridge, your fellow?
Sorry, sorry.
No, I, these are good questions. They're actually good. They're making me think of all that, though.
Sorry. So the Waste Water Treatment Plant, uh we've got a lot of capital investment to make down there, and I didn't, you know, carry too much of it in. It's a nice discussion. A lot of it's in the, in the I W R M P. We are in the process of applying for a grant for the uh, it's a Long Island, it's um Wildlife Initiative, I think it's called, for one, for one point two million dollars to replace the three air raiders we have. And that's the one we're operating, the picture on the right there. So, you know, hopefully that comes through. We will have some match funding that we need to, we need to bring to that table for that, but hopefully it will uh And then uh as we were just talking, the uh Lowtham Street Pump Station, we've got some pretty significant investments to make there, as well as the Liberty Street Pump Station. You'll see an appropriation coming through those. It's um it's bombing some council amendments for um some designs, some really study to decide what direction to go with the street station. It's greatly oversized for the flows it takes now. All these buildings we're operating as factories that needed to run a lot, and it did. Thus, it's five, six, eight times the size it needs to be. So ideally, we can put a much smaller pump station in there, much more efficient, and it won't cost the city so much in operation. But it's kind of just the scratching the surface of some of the the investments we're gonna be making with wastewater.
We can tap into some of those grants because we flow into the Connecticut, which goes in multiple channels.
Lots of, exactly.
That's, that's great.
Yeah, we can't guarantee we'll get it, but we try.
That's at least worth a shot.
Yep. Yep, absolutely.
Then it's, I'm just, sorry. Um I know that there's emerging technology around wastewater treatment that is uh, I wouldn't say it's passive, but it's like um it, it's not necessarily using electricity to aerate the water. It's more of having an ecosystem that helps re, it's, is there, is that technology moving along at all? I mean, is that something that in twenty years, we could potentially say, hey, there's new technology? I mean, is that something that in twenty years we could potentially say, hey, there's new technology where we could have a a way to take this brown water and maybe or black water, I don't know what it's called, like the real bad stuff.
Yeah.
And and turn it into fresher water using a more passive method?
So like reuse of wastewater, it's happening around the country for irrigation, things like that. I don't know that we'd see it happening here, I mean, we so say you wanted to reuse our wastewater for irrigation irrigation purposes, then we'd have to have a way to get it to where and and pumps pressurize this and you know, you'd have another s set of water main around where we we need I I got a hundred year old water main out there that we need to, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, and and I I feel like that that's um one piece of it, but I think the other piece is, you know, having um greenhouses that have plants that aerate the water that and then what comes out of that is is like a is like clear water that's usable, may even portable, I don't I don't even maybe not that far.
Yeah. Is that, you know?
Yeah. But you know, I mean, just like thinking, cause I imagine that the wastewater treatment plant cost like it costs a lot of money to run the machinery
It does, yeah.
on a yearly basis.
Yeah, it does.
Um and and it just again, it's I love throwing stuff out, see what sticks, you know, but put it on the radar.
Yeah, that's great for the as and as part of the Honeywell project, we are looking at a solar array for the back of the wastewater treatment plant, there's we're still studying whether that's feasible or not.
Yeah.
They actually did some uh some uh ground penetrating radar on the site a lot last week and we'll see kind of where it goes and what you know, financially, whether that's gonna be viable for for the city, so.
Awesome.
Castle Riley?
No, I just I'm kind of seconding what you're thinking. I know it's specifically at UMass, um they have a collaboration right now with the United Nations where they look at um different like nature based solutions.
Mm-hmm.
My understanding of it is right now it wouldn't fit within our framework. Just because of, you know, the way that our community is situated, but it's definitely going to be a thing in the future for sure, like I I would imagine in twenty years um there will be people with PhDs publishing actual systems that can be put into place, so.
Cause this is pretty large scale, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Absolutely. Yeah.
Yeah, it's it's doable, just probably not right now.
Yeah. Uh engineering vision, so I think the one about uh some of the people working on the wall. So Union Street, we do have that project. Notice to proceed to the contractor is gonna be on schedule to be issued by June first. I can't guarantee how soon after that date the contractor will start, but I am optimistic that they will get underway on Union Street this this construction season. Cherry Street, the uh municipal vulnerability program and CDVG project, we're working on. We're gonna have everything's gonna be brand new on Cherry Street, it's gonna be great, green infrastructure, infiltration basins. Repair of the head wall and the uh the broken, it's got big land. Replacement of the sanitary sewer, replacement of the water main. It's it's a lot overdue, it's gonna be great to get that that project on. So Hoyoke Street, I'll I'll go into a little bit more in my next couple slides, we do have uh we've got a couple of concepts working through, we just uh finished an application for a complete street grant to make some some great pedestrian safety improvements on on Hoyoke Street at the intersection of Allen and East Green Street. So we we're we're, you know, a lot of this is happening in construction with the planning department, I can't say enough about the great things about working with the planning department and uh us working with the DPW and the planning department working together to get this and and we can really get things moving and things happening. So it's just uh it's great that Jeff and the people down there are uh are helping us, you know, make everything happen, so.
And these were a lot of the things, I I think it was maybe last week or the week before, there was a resident in that area that sent an email out to the city. Was was um was that some of those projects that you were citing in that email? Um specifically with the um
This would be good little crosswalk.
Oh, yeah, from Cliffview Manor, yeah, okay, yeah.
Oh, so
Yes, um yeah, yeah, yep, yep, so we are we're Oregon, we had to get survey on the intersections up. I'll go into a little bit more, I'll show you some pictures of some of the challenges at East Green Street.
Okay.
That's really Allen Street's pretty straightforward, the the upgrades there, but uh East Green Street's a kind of different area, so.
Yeah. Okay.
Uh uh Main Street, uh everyone's seen the the chapter ninety project, we've been working on there for years now, but it's uh it's coming together. I wish I had some more concrete dates, I'm working on getting a date for the painting to happen, I wanna get those crosswalks painted and you know, fog lines and permanent yellow lines, double plastic paint down, but um I don't have a concrete date, no, should be, it should be within the next the next few weeks. So uh Main South Street, I'll I'll go into the some of the improvements we made there a little bit more in the next couple of slides. Ford Hill, Torrey and Wanderly, uh we've got bridges there, Wanderly is kind of more of a pulver, not really a bridge, but we do need to resurface those, so that's something we're we're, you know, actively searching for funding for to get the uh get to have them milled off and 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 repaved. So there's a little more to it than just paving a road like like when it's bridge surface, so. We get into that. Engineers are helping us a lot with implementing IWRMP projects and we are working the time bond on some waters where multi-year water super rate structure. In the next three to five years. So we'll
And do you have kind of, I mean, I guess for the sake of certainly for the council, potentially for the public, like do you have any sort of public documents with like to do like necessary projects, costs and projection of like what's the recent plan to be completed?
Is that something or is it more more like you've identified certain areas that need work and how much it might cost, but it's not this like organized, it's like a transparent document?
Well, it's Well, the IWRMP really lists it out and puts costs. Now it's twenty eighteen cost, so I mean, everything in there you can count on the what I've been going with about thirty percent higher.
That's a time on study.
Yes, yeah, so a lot of the the water sewer investments, capital improvements are are really listed in there. Part of the work we're doing on getting our the new rate structuring is is, you know, going really going through the IWRMP and taking out the things we've completed and kind of reprioritizing some stuff that needed to be done in twenty eighteen made. You know, either still needs to be done, got done, or we've got something taking priority over something that was a priority then, so. It's kind of just, that's really a living document that we are, we need to keep keep fresh and and keep keep picking away at the stuff that's in it, so.
I mean, I know one thing that something they do in other cities is they have kind of like on the on the website, upcoming at least for the sake of paving, like paving projects, you can know either and you can submit something like a pop up.
Yeah, I think you have something like that, right?
We do, we have a bit of a question after I've seen the website.
But also like a calendar of upcoming projects, so for the folks who are like, when are they paving Union Street, which seems like you ask like every day on Facebook. Like they could, I could point them somewhere and they could say, oh, not only are you doing Union Street here, but like you're also doing your resurfacing wonder like like do you, is there something available like that, or is that is that something you would be open to doing?
I'll be absolutely be open to do it. Some a lot of it is, you know, when I can say we're gonna do something, it's very dependent on funding.
Yeah.
And you know, that's the like I and and it's not just me that like I gotta pull everybody together, it's like, you know, here's what we've got for funding for FY twenty three. You know, where can we get the most uh the most bang for the buck out of it for the people that live in the city, so.
I wonder how much that would help too though, cause I think people don't understand often, you know, how the funding works, whether it be chapter ninety, whether it be appropriations to the city, whether it be the need for grants or state or federal funds.
Yeah.
Oh, just something to think about if there's a way, obviously, that the council could be helpful and the city could be helpful facilitating.
One interesting number, especially for this meeting is, we get about four hundred and fifty to five hundred thousand, I think our our chapter ninety allotment for FY twenty three is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we look at the work we just did on Main Street. Came in, it was just over a million to do that. Catch basin replacements, paving, so you're better than two years of chapter ninety of chapter ninety funding to 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 tackle a project like that.
Right.
So, you know, and I know some of our focus next with FY twenty three funding is gonna be is gonna be on Hoyoke Street. Whether or not we get the complete streets grant to make the pedestrian safety improvements out of that, I'll go into, um I I wanna get those installed, so. You know, we're working to work public works and our engineering staff to try to allocate them, I mean, we have to do the best we can there, so.
Anything else here?
No, I mean, I just I like that idea, um just because I know, right, just from being out on the campaign trail and collecting signatures. I don't think that people understand the complexity of all of the work that you do and all of the different moving parts, all of the funding sources and I mean, I don't know how we could convey that in a narrative to the public to help them understand, but
Yep.
I mean, even just seeing this presentation is already is magnitude's larger than I even imagined that it was, so.
It like one challenge is people don't see the 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 utilities under the road, it might look like we could we could go, hey, they pay battery, why can't they pay mine? Well, maybe we can't because there's a clay tile pipe sewer main that is is completely falling apart or either that that we need to replace first, that
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
that the enterprise one can't afford to replace.
Right, right, right.
That's part of the issue with Maple Street, the sewer there is is in is in not in great shape and we need and I can't in good conscience go throw a bunch of city funding at paving that street knowing that we're probably gonna have to dig it right back up.
Yeah, it's good, right.
So that's one of the challenges there and and taking a good look at that sewer, um work some camera, some inspection work into the reuse of the schools. And you know, kind of what happens there, though, I'm sure there probably will be utility connections for the reuse of those buildings and you know, as we get a clearer picture of what they're gonna do with the schools will uh be able to make a more informed decision on, you know.
And I think that would be for the school reuse committee, it would be a something to have in the the frame of references of like especially like a TIF. You know, where we could funnel some tax money back for directly into infrastructure.
Yep.
Like, so you know, think about projects that would encourage a TIF would be huge, cause that could help pay for
Yeah.
something that we don't necessarily have the money for.
Mm-hmm, same here. Uh I did have a couple more little points on there, the Park Street, the safer school project, that's, you know, gears out, we are working with the planning department, not our engineering staff is. Um there's some kind of unique challenges to that, there'll be bigger public discussions about that. Um and then, you know, one thing that the department is still responsible for is the maintenance of the closed landfills, I'm allowed to go with it and on Albert Street, so some some of our resources are directed for the closed, we have lots of challenges with neighbors and the block building field and on Albert Street.
It's
Yeah.
And and is is the um it's allowed though? Um do we have a ballpark of how much we spend to maintain that?
I can get that for you, I have the
Just curious.
Yep.
Um you know, because I don't know if you realized that was slated for a soul, but similar to all of our street, it was slated for solar at one point.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
Um and I know that we're spending, at at that time, I think we were between the two landfills, it was like thirty thousand a year.
Yep.
To maintain them.
Yep.
Um but that would be just good for us to know as we look at different projects and different um
I
uh directions to go as a council.
Yes.
Uh it'd be helpful to have that kind of information.
That's Yeah. Uh so South and Hoyoke Street, uh pedestrian improvements, we talked about a little bit, but so what we've got here is just, you know, we're getting the sidewalk done, I'm 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 really happy to see that project moving forward and that we were able to work it in into as quickly as we can as quickly as we've been able to. That side, it's 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 just gonna be a great connection down to the rail trail for 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 everyone, so. It's huge, yeah. So so this intersection, Main and South, I know it's been a it's been a topic and or not, we, you know, we're doing, it's a great example, we're doing what we can with what we have to to get a short term, you know, or short term, something better in the short term, you know, at that intersection, so.
Mm-hmm.
Uh this was just a great example of us working with the planning department and uh the owner of a variety store there to to get the you know, ADA accessibility in on the corner there, uh RRBs in and then and the safer sidewalk on the street, so. We have a it's a similar situation, sorry, my picture's not great there, you can watch better on the computer. It's a similar problem with with uh Hoyoke and East Green Street because there is no area of refuge on the East Green Street side, Hoyoke Street for us to I think I'd love to go out there and put a a at least a flashing LED pedestrian sign in, but I don't have anywhere to put it. So it's a, you know, we've we've had a conversation with the building owner there and he's very receptive to us doing something similar to what we did at at Main and South and you know, getting a couple of nice aprons along the side of the building and a nice delineated concrete sidewalk with multiple granite curbs so that they can still get tractor trailers in and out.
Right, cause the old school is right into the parking lot, basically.
Yeah, absolutely, there's just nowhere for it to go, the sidewalk is not.
Yeah.
That Valley Kirchens.
Yes, the sidewalk is not defined there. Along the side of the building, yet it does start past that property on East Green Street.
Mm-hmm.
So we looked at a couple of different concepts for that, moving it to the other side of the street and that would involve taking quite a big front yard from a couple of residences that are there, plus the sidewalk is on the opposite side further up the street, so what we're afraid of is people will continue to just walk along, like it's gonna take the uh the more, you know, not use the new sidewalk, so I think, you know, and talking with the building owner, that's like I said, he was pretty receptive to to what the improvements we're gonna make. We'll uh you know, we'll stay in communication with moving forward and hopefully we get the grand money to to do it.
Right. And they moved the state highway starts here sign, so you can see the flashing
Yes, yes.
lights on that for South Street.
Yes, yeah, that's needed to have it.
Okay.
So just, you know, for the sake of conversation, the improvements that I just discussed at East Green and Hoyoke, the cost for that looking about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. While I have it up, I've got Allen Street, the improvements that we wanna make there too, to get some better access into Cliffview. So you can see there that there's no ramp, uh sidewalks in horrible condition going down in Allen Street. So part of what we wanna do is get a nice concrete ADA compliant sidewalk in down Allen to Tower. And ADA ramps on both sides of Allen Street, even though there is no crosswalk on, I mean, there's no sidewalk on the Allen Street side, Hoyoke, perhaps something there in the future.
At one point, since since that's 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 housing authority, right?
It is.
Is there a certain point where the street, the state becomes responsible for that street or because it because it's because it's housing authority then?
So
Or is it pretty much just like all we have here?
And I I could be wrong, but Allen Street is still a city street, so we're we're going along Allen to Tower, like we plowed that I've talked about before.
Right.
So what I, you know, my goal with the project is to get a nice ADA compliant sidewalk to Tower Lane and an RRB and you know, ADA ramps and a concrete log, yeah. For session, so. Uh cautious now, just to get that happen, get that to happen in the next couple of years.
Would this be a good time to talk about the Main and South intersection? Do you wanna wait till after your presentation?
Um we can, we certainly can talk about it, I've got a I've got some information I want, I've got a couple, I don't have too much more here.
No, that's that's that's
Okay, I did uh get some slack, I have plans if you guys wanna take a peek out for the uh just to give some context to what I just uh explained. You're ready?
Yeah, cool.
So that's the uh the concept plan for the pedestrian safety improvements at East Green and Hoyoke.
So you'd have to do some sort of, yeah.
Crosswalks landing area.
It's same you'd have to eliminate, they're eliminating portion of parking lot.
Yeah, they lose a couple of parking spaces.
Yeah. Yeah. They're okay with that?
Uh yeah, they're they're receptive to it, we'll we'll stay in communication with them and work through work through the challenges with them as we as we get project going. I think that if we can get this installed, it'll be a great improvement for residents of that side of Hoyoke Street that wanna get to downtown. I can get you guys copies of this if you wanna if you wanna see it too.
Yeah.
And then on Allen Street, just show that. This is the concept round street, crosswalk, cross, cross Allen. Have the ramp and sidewalk there in the future, if we get some new sidewalk in. This one's pretty straight.
Oh, yeah, it was okay.
Yeah. Start over? Well, just a little bit more about the breakdown of DPW, just our administration. Uh myself and two full-time staff in the office, we'll keep our accounts payable for um we feel a lot of our requests, anything anyone needs, you know, we'll have a block with DPW, they call our office first and lots of times we have to send them to the uh water sewer department or for the highway, but we try to get everybody moving in the right direction. Um Collector's Office handles all the utility bill payments. They helped us out greatly over the past several months with brush top stickers, but that has since come back to DPW, so if anybody needs a sticker from Albert Street brush top, those are available at DPW's office now. DPW also handles the tree ward. D P W also handles the tree ward, uh Sarah Greenleaf is the city's tree ward, it's an excellent excellent job for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, she's down there. Absolute expert in urban forest, you know, it's great, great to have her on, it's awesome, helped us out, so.
And these are these the lights?
So the the streetlight, the the top picture there is very similar to the model streetlight that we had installed as part of the um EverSource um LED streetlight conversion. Take a minute just to point out some of the numbers that I know it's it's caused a great deal, it's an inconvenience for a lot of residents, but we have we've obtained two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in free in streetlights at no cost to the city. Projected annual energy savings twenty five thousand dollars a year, and I can confidently say it will save eight to ten thousand dollars in streetlight repairs over the next five, eight years. So as much of an inconvenience as it's caused in certain areas of town, we're gonna work through those inconveniences and 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 find a better solution where where there where there is one. And just kind of bear bear with us, you know, we'll 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 work on them, so. The streetlight, it's very hard, I found, to get a picture of a streetlight thirty five feet in the air out of telephone pole, but if you can kind of see it there, that is a different model. So that streetlight is across from Sharp um on Main Street, the uh barber shop there. We got a complaint from a resident in one of the buildings, they had an LED streetlight that we had installed prior to EverSource to replace and sodium halogen was 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 bothering there, was was really lighting up their apartment, so we had our contractor come and put a a different style shield on, it's really pointed right down, you can see it's almost like a visor on that lane. So that's what you'll see, something similar in the areas of town where we where we're having continued problems.
It seems to mostly be in the streets that are like really tiny or like the houses are close together.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um cause I know like um you know in like the parking lots or like on the main streets that you were really good job, but when I started like tracking where all of the complaints were coming into us, um you know it's in like those really tucked in tiny streets where I think the light just bounces off of the roof.
Yeah. Oh absolutely, and 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 there's a better solution and we'll you know whether it's a shield on the existing fixture, whether we
Yeah.
remove that exit, the the fixture that was just installed and saved it for when we have trouble with it somewhere else, it's a totally different fixture and um you know either way at the end of the day, it'll be a
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
we'll have a much more economical streetlight infrastructure than we've had.
Yeah. Yeah.
And the green and greener.
Right.
And how many high pressure sodium lights do we still have out there?
None at this point.
Really?
If you see one out, some of them that are out there were installed at the request of a resident uh abutting the pole of the property, so
Yeah.
if it didn't get done, it's because it's a privately owned street.
Privately, to think on West U Terrace, maybe the streetlights are.
Those should be done by now, the the pole top units took a little longer to do.
Yeah, cause they're yeah, they're like weird woodland poles.
Yes, yep, but those should, those are done, they they should be all LED at this point, so I'll have to check it out.
Okay, okay. Wow, cause you can always tell the H P S ones of the orange, it's like this bright orange glow.
Yeah. Yeah, cause we could get some questions like why didn't they change that one, well that's because a resident requested EverSource to put that one in at a point in time, they actually paid electricity cost for that on their electric, which is like, and so stuff happens around town, handful anyway.
Oh. Mm-hmm. And um you would, I mean we've we've had conversations about this with the public, so there's some there's some supply chain issues in terms of
There was, uh there was, that led to some significant, I mean the there was supply chain issues that led to significant delays in our
in all correct.
in the contractor coming back to town and continuing and when they were in town and continuing, they were addressing the problem lights in the front. So when the everything around, all the parts arrived that they needed to continue with the pole top installations, they took took care of the you know what was outstanding from the plates, so you know different, a member of the public still has an issue with their light, they gotta call the D P W and let us know and we'll we'll uh you know we'll see what what we can do to 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 get results.
So so all the all the complaints that are out there are?
Addressed, that could be addressed in the EverSource project.
Okay, okay.
So there's there's a handful of work orders we sent out to U S N E, our city's um streetlight repair contractor last week that are
Mm-hmm.
to address some of the lights that are too bright or maybe at the wrong angle where there's
Okay, assumption.
you know that the solution might be an adjustment, it might be a new fixture, it might be a shield, um but energy resources did what they were required to do.
What do you think the timeline might be for for that for the other?
Uh generally it's about three weeks, once we send a work order to U S N E, they're usually fixed within two to three weeks.
Okay. So hopefully so hopefully by June, these these are the outstanding.
The ones that we've sent, yeah.
Okay, okay.
So.
All right, and and again, people could just call, people could just.
Yep, just call the office and let us know if you still have a um and if it hasn't been resolved or it's it's not um it's it's not resolved enough, we'll and we'll see what else, what if anything we can do to make it better.
Okay, great, yeah, thanks for I know there's a lot of a lot of things to feel around that, so thank you.
So uh that's basically it, so those three guys, uh if you have any questions.
Uh we have one other, any any questions?
Yeah.
Uh. Um I think I passed on once, I was gonna ask along, but it was something I was thinking about and I forgot, any any other questions from the from the uh committee members, that's the derby.
I'm sorry.
You mean tonight?
Yeah.
We did this public safety.
Are you looking for it?
Okay, should the committee, is that the safety complex? Or the
The Democratic.
The Democratic committee.
There's a they do base, yeah, what is it?
Next door.
Next door, police supply station, okay, thank you.
Okay, great.
Um customer.
No, I'll just say, okay, this is really good information, um a lot of things that I didn't know about, a lot of working hard, so um I mean I know obviously you're well respected in the city, but just to really say like it's impressive the amount of work that you all do on a regular basis, um and the fact that most of this goes on behind the scenes and the public doesn't even know about it, means that you guys are handling everything really well, so I think um definitely compliments for all.
Thank you, yeah. Yeah, we got a great group of people at D P W, you know, a month of these guys we really get.
Yep.
Yeah, I and I'll say publicly too, I mean the the how responsive your department is, certainly you director, it's it's very heartening because we you know unfortunately what what boils down to, when we talk about a city and great schools or you know economic development, all people care about is the roads, the potholes.
Yeah.
And 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 so.
Hey, I get it, I don't make it in the meat, nobody does, but there's a lot, so.
So thankfully, yeah, yeah, um I guess it's a question for the committee, so this was a great overview and I mean certainly no need to reinvent the wheel, but you know we're doing these quarterly, um I think you know ask all of it for the committee members, so what what type of information do you think would be valuable, that's how I certainly will be as much, maybe update some of the projects we talked about uh what would you like to see going forward now that we've gotten, we've gotten everything, um what would you like to hear when the director goes back in three months?
I mean I think the the pieces that are relevant to this committee are are important, you know, one of the questions that I was gonna ask, I know your predecessor was not into these
Yeah.
Yes, you see.
even though I can try to convince him many times, speed humps, like this is gonna be something that you know is gonna be part of the discussions within our committee as we look at speed mitigation, as electronic uh signs are on our agenda now.
Mm-hmm.
And basically speed mitigation is something that all of us I think are get, at least I am getting a lot of emails about, um and so as we kind of move into this
Yeah.
problem solving phase, I wanted to get your kind of perception on speed humps, um you know or speed tables.
Yep.
To look at as a speed mitigation tool, specifically as it relates to maintaining the roads, plowing the roads and and you know any sort of issues that could arise in that realm, I think that that's gonna be helpful to us as a committee.
Yeah.
And also you know looking at the my Omar, um at the other pieces that are relevant to this committee, uh the sidewalks, the um you know painting crosswalks, those types of things are gonna be
Yeah.
you know the public safety related stuff, I think is gonna be critical to keep a a finger on the pulse of.
Sure.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
So early.
No, I mean that sounds good, I mean particularly because there's a lot of uh intersecting uh questions for this committee um related to um you know policing traffic, um you know from the police department, so I think that would be definitely something to explore, um
Um.
how we can collaborate across uh departments to to try to fix some of these issues without spending as much money, I think that the the cheaper we can go, but still be effective, um so I mean even if that's just like you know ideas that you could think of that would.
Yeah, I mean so there's you know we do what we can, we you know we're we're we put fog lines to kind of, I think we just did on Clark Street, um to just kind of visually narrow the lane and try to get people to slow down, I mean speed humps, like they're they're a tool um in that in the kind of the toolbox for for you know speed mitigation, but you we have to have to consider drainage around them, uh the noise, the associated noise, the deceleration, acceleration and suspension noise from the car, so
Yeah.
it's very easy to, you know, you're gonna get people to slow down, but you're gonna you you could create a noise, a noise issue too, and people hit it and then maybe they zoom right away, so you gotta kind of be cognizant of whether you know what you know what's the best solution. You know, I was contacted by a resident on on Prospect Street that was asking us to put one in there, so afraid that's you know that'd be a cut through to uh it's a pleasant street, you know, so you know look at what we can do there, Prospect Street being so wide, um presents different challenges, but.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
I guess another question would be, it's all right, um you know, do you uh do um do you have a relationship with your uh counterpart in Northampton?
Uh go ahead.
Um because I like that, you know, the like the noise thing first, me that that would that would, you know, since they are, they put a lot in
Yep, that's right, yep. Yep.
in the last couple of years, that would be a good way to like, you know, a sound war or with their experience, um
Yeah, see what what they have. Sure.
you know, I I think that 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 would be valuable for us as we kind of weigh these things, but I I think it is gonna be, it's gonna, I mean obviously it's gonna be really important to to have that type of input from you, um and and I think you know uh it's I I just wanna I'll give some accolades here of whether do because I think that they really are, is that the coordination that you specifically as the leader of the D P W have implemented with the planning department is impressive, but I haven't seen it in my time in the city be that coordinated, and I think what we're seeing is a result that is like much more robust.
It's a lot of stuff can happen before we get out of that.
Yeah, I I so I just I appreciate that.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean one of the pieces of feedback I've received as we talk about speed mitigations is A, we need to talk, we also need to obviously include the police in that discussion because where there's perceived speeding, where there really is speeding are two different things, and then also if we consider
Yes.
you know emergency vehicles, so you know um fire trucks and police cars, like what are certain travel routes that would be op, that might be less optimal to have you know, speed humps in those areas, but we'll, yeah, I think we've talked about this, we need to we need to kind of fine tune that probably. Um I agree with everything that like by uh the committee members just said, I think obviously probably like you know strategic updates on projects when we come back, like you know like we hear about where if we're anywhere with the Glendale Bridge, for instance, or we're nowhere, um you know and obviously like fleet needs, appropriation, stuff like that, so you know fortunately there'll probably be something in three months that will be a big topic in discussion, we'll just talk about that, so you know and imagine in 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 following in in follow-up meetings, it'll probably be more like a twenty minute like
Sure.
like kind of follow up, that's that's not too dangerous.
Yeah. Yeah.
Any other comments, I mean what I mean do you have thoughts about what you would like to tell us in like follow-up meetings or?
No, I think just keeping you guys apprised of projects and what you know how we're trying to keep things moving and and efforts we're making.
Yeah.
We are, you know where where someone comes to us with whether it's a pedestrian safety concern or speeding concern, you know we we do listen and we want it, we wanna do what we can, it's just you know multiple factors to consider as we try to resolve some of those problems.
I mean I think you being on the agenda is very important for the public, uh because of everything my colleague said is that there's there's a a lot of concerns that surround what your your department does, and I think a lot of it's invisible.
Yeah.
And there's so much happening that people don't know about, and then things that are kind of seen, I don't think a lot, unfortunately a lot of residents don't understand the complexity, and so this is a really, this is a good opportunity to provide kind of an educational service to, so.
Yes.
Um I guess just the last thing that I would wanna know, um obviously no public works department um is fully funded in all the ways they want to, I think everyone in the uh country is uh needing more money, but compared to the types of projects um that are going on, right, uh taking other things like um repairing vehicles or purchasing new vehicles, would you say that financially you're able to sustain the things that you're doing, or should the city take a a different approach in trying to increase funding sources for the department, like you know with with reason, obviously, not everything gets funded, but
Mm-hmm. Yep.
um I just wanna make sure that uh from a longevity standpoint, looking at the next twenty five years or so, are we sustainable enough that we can keep maintaining things as they're going?
Oh, I mean on the water and sewer side, where 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 rates, I mean there's gonna be some some challenging conversations, assuming about rates and how and and investments we need to make in the city's water sewer infrastructure, as far as our like, you know, a lot of the fleet D P W fleet is funded through the enterprise fund, we have water super wastewater department vehicles, um highway department, you know, I would I like to see the fleet turned over there more quickly.
Yeah.
Yes, but we are you know also sensitive to um people's, you know, what what the city can afford, but we you know, we got two excellent mechanics right now, we're gonna keep keep all our stuff going, um it's just we do hit a point with things like the truck thirty three I talked about, the street sweeper where uh it's not in the city's best interest to keep investing money in these vehicles that are just getting so so old, so you know maybe we we look to replace everything every eight eight to ten years, um which is longer than some other cities do, but maybe not as long as as we have been, so maybe that's a goal we work towards financially, but you know it's all
Yeah. Yeah.
you know, we just do what we can, so.
Right, right, okay.
Uh so kind of lighten the round now, uh so a couple, um I'm just gonna, we're just gonna be free association, no kidding, um so uh we have two other items on our agenda that directly impact or are related to uh to to your department, so um one quickly, um it it's farther down, but it's just a quicker one, is the um so we're starting to discuss maybe more permanent electric speed monitoring signs.
Sure.
So you had a conversation with Chief Upperty, I think there was general consensus both of this committee and his department that it's a good idea.
Mm-hmm.
Um so we've started kind of researching those, I wanted to talk to uh the the him more about, you know, I what where we would need those. Uh and then I guess, so I guess just in general, I guess your thoughts about that.
I think they're great, I mean historically they've always been managed by the police department, we're happy to help, um we've installed poles, like for them, put them on in any area where there wasn't one.
Yeah.
Um you know, we're hap- we're happy to help, help with them, um if the city was able to fund a couple more, I wouldn't mind having our staff deploy them. But I I do think there's some benefit to, Sergeant Alexander does a great job of getting them out there, um and you know really tracking the data that comes in and and they can enforce accordingly, um we're certainly happy to help.
Great.
The city wants to wants to fund a few, they're gonna get them out there, you know, even.
Right, my favorite. Uh we, these these ones are permanent.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, permanent, okay.
These are, these will be permanent signs that would stay in that location, most of them um actually upload data to the cloud, so it goes directly to the police station, it's I mean it's pretty, it's pretty cool.
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah. It's cool, yeah.
Which which uh I'm curious.
It's it's the fifteen S D.
Yeah.
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 It's surprisingly not that expensive.
Uh it's like twenty nine hundred, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. Some of this stuff's not as fast, you think.
Yeah.
Yeah, that the one, it's like multi- multiple colors, feel the feedback.
Multiple colors has feedback, if you go over and says thank or if you stay within and says thank you, I mean it's it's kind of cool.
Yeah.
Oh, that's pretty, yeah.
Can I ask you, counselor, is it because is it because it has the letters S D?
S D, yeah, it's like, see, that's my initials, that's the one.
Yeah, so we should.
No, but there's S L too, but that was a little bit more expensive.
Right. Yeah.
Have you thought where of where you would want from it?
That's that's a conversation, I think that it would be helpful to have you and the chief
Absolutely.
to to contribute to that discussion and also to know, you know, um it's gonna be also be a budgeting thing, like oh how many do we have, how much can we afford?
Yeah. Yeah.
Um what are the strategic points?
In my years working for the city, the two worst streets to work on, we don't have blue lights on our trips, you know, we yell, people won't listen to it.
Right.
Also, the worst, the two worst I've ever worked on were uh Line Street
Yep.
and Park Street.
Yep, yep.
Park Street, we had we had a valve break on water near Park Street right by
Park Street.
Yeah.
Howard Avenue, and that was one of the most treacherous nights I think we've ever
Can imagine.
I can't tell you why at Park Street, but people would be there.
Well, that's my that's my precinct, I have about ten emails right here, from people that live on Park Street being like, is a racetrack here, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that we had general consensus that 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 the kind of no-brainer um signs would be gateway roads, so
Sure.
line which feeds into the park, you know, Hoyou, Northampton, probably maybe east, um and then like we'd wanna get more information from the police.
Yeah. Yeah.
And certainly D P W too, cause you 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 probably have some thoughts about too, like what what are some of the inner in the inner ring, you know, like so um um I think probably what we do at this point, I I can forward you the email with some of the uh the signs and then um I didn't hear back from any other vendors, but uh you know, what we probably do is is uh convene a meeting to talk about that sometime after the budget stuff's over. So um I'm glad you're in support, and then um again, just briefly, you know, I know there's been a lot of talk about. So um I'm glad you're in support, and then um a- again, just briefly, you know, I know there's been a lot of talk about the traffic light in the South. I think police made some, offered some really convincing data as to why that would be beneficial, you know, mostly just A based on how many accidents we're seeing there, and then comparing that to um. To Northampton and West before and after there was a light there.
Yeah.
Um and you know, so you've identified obviously a very long list of items that the city, I mean, especially the Glen Dale Bridge, that's that's kind of like an obvious one, but. Um but you know, I guess the question is cost, and and so that we could figure out, you know, is this part of a laundry list? You know, I've had some conversations with Representative Carrie about there's ways of carving this out separately, it's a little, cause you know better than I do, um. I can probably speak to it rather than I can, it's it's a little complicated there because of where the the city, the city street just butts the state highway.
Yes.
Um but I guess, you know, do you do you have a general idea of that kind of cost around that project?
So, it that it's, it's very, it's a very challenging project, because we don't have accounts according to mast OT to warrant a light at that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
So our plan is to get out there in the fall when the school opens and get and get new fresh traffic counts and see what those numbers give us.
Mm-hmm.
Uh I I do have some figures that I can I can talk about, um but that are very. Non-scient, I was gonna say non-scientific, they're fairly loose figures, but uh if we kept the current lane configuration.
Yeah.
Minor modifications to driveways, and just kind of did as little as possible to get a light installed there, we'd probably be looking at six to seven hundred thousand dollars. I I may, I'd probably say closer seven to eight, given given the way we're seeing bins come in and and the costs associated with the things right now.
Mm-hmm.
However, as part of that, we're looking at sixty five to seventy five thousand dollars in design work. With the orings to make sure we can support, you know, support the streetlight mast arm, mast arm properly, um. And what I have to to do is ask for seventy five thousand dollars to design a light install at that intersection. When we don't have the counts to to get mast OT to 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 okay a light getting installed at that intersection.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, like in in the fall, we'll get out there, we'll get some, we'll get fresh traffic counts and see what that tells, I mean, we might, it's it's a dangerous intersection, I mean, when I work for the water department, I drove that way every day to work, and uh. You know, you see the kids walking, looking down at their home and home of school, and there is, um you know, there's improvements that can be made there, um.
Not to mention there's a bus stop in front of the package store too.
Yes. Yes. Yeah.
So, it's like a conduit for kids.
Yeah.
Now, I have a question real quick, right, um that's six to seven hundred thousand kind of guesstimate.
Mm-hmm.
Um could that potentially include like a bump out at each of the um angle part of the section, so. People, so it would narrow it to one lane, so people wouldn't be going around people if they're turning down South Street on either side, do you know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, I mean, that's something we could work into the design, um the the bigger, bigger a project we make out of it, the more it costs.
So more it costs, right.
Um you know, when the other figures I have here, uh you know, we're looking at total redo, and we start talking about turning lanes, and really making it, you know, you get up to one point five million dollar mark, you know, pretty quick.
And and something that someone had asked, I'm sorry, before I go back, councilor, do you have questions about this?
Nope, not at all, I'm just doing some um meeting and stuff right now.
So one thing that, just for my application too, one thing that's kind of like pointed out something about my intersections, is that. You wanna, if if you just basically have traffic flowing down Main Street, you don't necessarily want the light to turn around, so and and. And so, in other words, if there's no one coming from South.
Yeah.
Um so are there, there's technology that basically has like sensors or something, so.
Oh, sure, to sense a car at the at the at the light, absolutely, yeah, that would be something people would would try to build into that.
Okay. Yeah, okay, that's that's why, that's why I told them, I just want to share.
The big thing is is getting the counts, to getting the traffic count to be there, for it all to be warranted.
Yeah.
Right, to justify the the design, which, now, if we did have that design in place, could that leverage us some potential grants, or you know, since if it was a shovel-ready. Pro like.
Well, absolutely, I mean, one of the biggest focuses between us and the mayor's office and the police department is having shovel-ready projects as as infrastructure money comes out of downtown, you know, Washington or the state level, so. Um some of the appropriations you've seen me bring, you know, for wastewater pump stations, things like that, we're really just in an effort to get these projects, you know, this one's ready to go, let's do it.
Getting, right.
Because kind of nice thing about the sidewalk we just were doing on South Street, that was, you know, we had the contractor there, we had a contract in place, we had a light on. In the contract for concrete sidewalk installation, and we were in, just saying, you know, take it down and light that.
Yeah. Yeah, sounds great.
If the reality with funding, if we could get funding, would it probably, it would probably be a match, right, it probably would be a law.
There would be, yeah, there generally, almost with every grant program, there's a twenty, thirty percent match, twenty five percent match.
Yeah. Yeah.
You know, some of that, we're able to take our staff time, the city staff time that we're, you know, that is the bone into the grant project, um and use that to, you know.
Mm-hmm.
Take the, take away from the cash amount, that's that's necessary.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, okay.
So.
Is it anything kind?
Yes. Anything kind, too.
Anything else?
Um, so please.
Yeah.
Should.
Yeah, very thorough, and yeah, councilor Riley?
Yeah.
Um yeah, I just, like, once again, I just need to, uh there's one other item on our agenda, I just need to get the information for, and we can have a discussion about that.
It's an origin.
Um so I think we've covered everything, very much appreciate your time, thorough um uh presentation, um so I will take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay, yeah. So move.
Second.
Okay, we have motion to second, any other comments? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, I need no opposed, or nays? So uh meeting is adjourned at uh seven eighteen.
Just click the clipper.
Cool. Oh, yeah, thank you, yeah, so.